Or something, but.
I used to do needlepoint when I was younger, you know, but that's still very methodical. I mean, it's creative, but it's pretty methodical.
Yeah, it's daring. If you if you dare to change the suggested color, that's just wild.
I used to like also as a child to paint by numbers. You remember you could.
I did too.
By number things, yeah.
Of course, now we've gotten smarter.
That reflects how organized you are.
How dependent I am for others on others for creative ideas.
It's how quickly they snuffed our creativity is what it was. We found out later, you know, oh, we thought we were doing so well staying between the lines.
That's David in the lines, right?
Oh, boy.
Be my husband's mantra.
Well, it's like I would. I would get to the crosswalk and and. Don't cross until the little sign. And particularly if you go in the city, you know, it's like, man, you're never going to get across. What are you people talking about? Alrighty, I will. Let me see. A reflection. I'll go find my very short. Maybe I'll do two reflections. Who knows? Let's see here. I'm reading it again. Okay. You see, I believe we don't change until we change the stories that we tell about ourselves. And each other, Kara Bolton. Falls right into the stereotyping of people or or even not, you know, just people we know were in our families that, you know, if you go to a family gathering and everyone reverts back to the way they were at a certain age. Never mind that you've grown since you've changed a little. It's a thing we have to sort of find. So Christoph will join us at 12:30 and we'll go ahead and start. Does anyone have any change? Who wants to make a motion to accept the minutes or whatever? You ready to change? Have any suggested changes or corrections?
My. Your motion to accept the minutes as they are.
Awesome. Second. Oh, I should. Wow, it's recording, is it? How did that happen? And all of a sudden started recording. Can you do a timer on that? That's cool. How about the minutes? I'll on favor. I.
I.
Moving on to the good stuff. Uh, alright. Ashley.
Alright, look at that. I even unmuted myself in time. Yay.
You're gonna have a good day. You're gonna have.
Actually, for us at Trinity Center, this past month has been fairly uneventful. Of course, I'm uh nervous about saying that, but the coming up month is going to be very busy as we're gearing up for our second annual online gala on June 11th. Um, we have some surprises planned for this year's event, so I hope each of you will consider joining us or at least just watching in to see what we've got in store. Registration is free and um when I send Joan the summary, I'll there will be like the link in there that you can paste in your browser to go to the place where you can register. Um, but other good things that are going on is Maria Line Das is back. She's our um Associate Executive Director and the heart and soul of our programming. So she's back and um.
What kind of a boy or girl?
She had a beautiful boy, beautiful little boy back in mid-January.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So, yeah, so she celebrated Mother's Day with her two boys yesterday.
Oh, great.
So she's back and leading our member advocacy and jumping right into things because uh we don't have enough else going on. We're also doing a strategic planning process. Um, so we've started that and we're really happy about that and we're getting support um from a pro bono consulting team from Stanford. So we feel really lucky about that. Uh, we're also feeling really glad that Contra Costa is in the orange cheer now, which means that none of our members are having to eat their breakfast outside on the cool mornings unless they want to. Um, and this is really good timing because we're also starting to be able to bring volunteer groups in to prepare um a breakfast on site. So the day can get off to an even better start for our members. And thanks again to being able to bring volunteers back carefully and slowly. Uh, we're able to open our clothing room a little bit more. So the members are appreciating that, too. A couple of other things we got going on in partnership with a local organization. We've begun a series of online workshops on auto maintenance and resources to help with your car, um which of course is very popular since a number of our members rely on their vehicles for safety and storage and not least transportation. Um, and we are still continuing to seek locations uh that may be able to restart the safe parking program. Um, I brought this up also at the Walnut Creek Homeless Task Force meeting and um a number of people chimed in with some interest around that. So again, if you have any ideas about that or you know of a place, we definitely want to start that program up again. And speaking of sites, even though we just finished our winter program a month ago and it seems like next winter is way far off, we're already having to think about the next season. Um, and especially since we all know how many that we really, really need additional emergency shelter capacity here in our county. Um, if Jamie jumps on, she'll probably talk about that a bit. Um, but we really, really need more shelter bits. So we certainly want to be able to be part of that solution, but we're interested in options beyond the armory. So if you think your faith community might be interested in helping in some way, um hook them up with me, please let me know so I can follow up with them. Um, so. So one sec, Les. I'll come see you. Thanks. I'm on a meeting. I'll come right to see you. Thank you, hon. So. So, uh, yeah, never a dull moment here.
I know where to find you.
Exactly. So we're just going through day to day. Things are looking good and we are already off to the races thinking about next winter.
Well, at least things are spaced, you know, in all the same form quarter, same quarter of the year, thank goodness.
Right.
Question. So for next year, you're hoping not to have to use Armory. I'm guessing that you're hoping to find a location where you wouldn't have to move, you know, like winter nights moves every two weeks or four weeks or something like that.
Ideally, um a- and also knowing the capacity that that our county needs in terms of interim shelter, emergency shelter, I wouldn't, I personally, Leslie, wouldn't rule out the possibility of maybe operating in more than one site if that helps bring up the capacity. But yes, it would be better to have a site where people don't have to constantly put up their tents or cots and take them down, put them up, take them down, take. So that that plus the armory is expensive, makes it our least favorable option, but um but we want to be able to do at least as much as we've done in the past and maybe more this coming up winter. So so Armory plus or minus some other places that might have other advantages like being cheaper and a little bit more stable for the members. So, yeah.
Yeah. So do you have any positions open? You had what Jenny leave?
Yeah, Jenny is Jenny's going to be moving back to be closer to family down in San Diego. So we are discussing uh how we want to fill that position. Um, and what what kind of things uh might be part of that job. But yes, please do stay tuned. We will be posting a job of some sort. Um, possibly to have an intersection between our fund development and volunteers and some basic admin that obviously needs to happen. So, yeah, so if anybody knows anything, start spreading the word and keep an eye on LinkedIn.
Okay, any questions for Zoom Trinity here today? Before she falls off the answers, but somebody's question there.
And then I'll be right back.
Okay, well, we'll wait for you. Good. Carry on and we'll carry on. We'll meet again.
Okay, great. I'll be right back.
Okay. And Sheltering is, I don't see Sheltering here. Hmm. Where is Julie? I don't know. We're gonna and Doug's up there, Snug. He snuck out on me. Hi, Doug.
Yeah, I snuck in on you.
Good, welcome.
So on the agenda, it says, uh, Jen wants me to talk about uh August action. Um, August Action Gathering. And I know that some of you know what that means in the Multi Faith Action Coalition context, but others I suspect do not. So um just a little background. Uh, for several years running, uh, Multi Faith Action Coalition had what we call an Au- August Action Gathering. Usually in the last week of August on a weekday, uh, and we have tried to get the word out to our email list that we really want everybody who's interested in what Multi Faith Action Coalition is doing to come to this event and just have a kind of a review of what we've done in the last year or where we're going and um talk about specific things that we can do together in, um, you know, a- advocacy actions that we can take together that will help to alleviate poverty. And um and usually we will have uh an inspirational speaker to come and talk about a theme related to one of the areas where we're working. Um, so last year because of COVID, we decided to skip it. We did not have it last year. We did not have a 2020 August Action Gathering. But we are considering um bringing it back for 2021 and um right now, uh, we haven't decided completely on what it would look like. So partly the reason this is on the agenda right now is to kind of get your feedback on whether you would be open to going to an outdoor in-person event of that nature. We would, if we do have it outdoor in person, we would also have a virtual option. And another option we would consider doing is if COVID is still a big enough concern, we would scratch the in-person part and just do it uh virtual. But um if we decide to do an outdoor in-person event, it would probably wi- with a virtual option, uh, we would probably do it on a weekday evening um in the last week of August, um, not Friday, it would probably be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday. Uh, turns out the last two days of August are uh Monday and Tuesday, uh August 30 and 31. So those are possibilities and the previous week, Monday, Monday through Thursday are possibilities as well. So I know, you know, without consulting your calendars and finding out what days you're uh available on, just in general, if uh if you're going to be around at all during the end of August, um I would like to see uh uh an expression of interest about who would consider. This is not a commitment, just who would who would think that they would be likely uh to attend an in-person outdoor gathering with a meal provided. It would be a some sort of um, I don't know, maybe a box supper or something like that uh provided as part of the program. So.
I've heard from three people, only one of whom is on this call, so.
Oh, oh, you you did put this out in an email?
Yeah.
I see. I see. I I I I'd forgotten that.
That's okay. People need to be invited.
You need to put your thumb thumb up as Carrie just did or put your actual hand up as I'm doing and uh we'll just get a little temperature check on who'd be interested. So you you got some numbers there, Jen?
No, but I'm getting them. So is there a preference on the day of the week or time of the, you know, on the day or anything? Because what's it usually? Is it a one and a half hour or? Two?
At least, yeah, one and a half or two hours.
So I could do it on the 31st, but none of the other days before that.
Okay.
So I. Okay, so other people, they have thoughts.
Is this historically, Doug, I've not attended this before. Is it historically an evening event or is it during the middle of the day? Uh, like at lunchtime?
I think we're thinking more an evening event right now for this year. Um, I do believe we had it at lunchtime at least one year. Uh, so it's been both ways.
Now, the last time we had it was more what late afternoon or something, right? Or something like I think we're looking to go a little bit closer to, you know, dinner time. But.
Alright, so one.
Input.
One thing that I was going to add to that is that um I I think if we had it on August 30th or 31st, they would have those two dates would have the advantage of less being less likely of interfering with regularly scheduled a monthly events because nobody schedules their regular monthly event on the fifth Monday of the month or the fifth Tuesday.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah. Save the date. I I think that's a way to uh set up the calendar there.
We have not yet chosen a date.
Okay, can you can you give a a quick uh one sentence review for Elizabeth who just was able to come on?
Yeah, sorry to be late.
Oh, um, so well, if this is just for Elizabeth, Elizabeth, have you ever been to a Multi Faith Action Coalition August Action Gathering?
I don't think I have.
Yeah, because we didn't have one last year, but.
I don't think she was living here.
Yeah, you you haven't been here long enough. Yeah, we've had a, we've had a, and um for several years running, we had a gathering. Multi Faith Action Coalition tried to get everybody together that's interested um for kind of an annual gathering, you know, kind of a review of where we've been and where we're going and uh with an inspirational speaker. And the question was, if we do that in the last week of August on a weekday, who would be interested in um participating if it was uh kind of a hybrid event? We would, we were were considering having it outdoors, social distanced um and uh with with a box dinner or or supper and and um having a virtual option. So the question was, who was interested in? Who who would think they might be interested in actually attending such a thing in person? And if if you're if you're if you know the answer to that, Ja- Jan will take your response.
Yes.
Okay, and and it also is across all the task force. So it's not just housing. You get the the here, you know, separate reports and um and everything, what what wonderful things have happened this year and uh spend time together and have an inspirational speaker, so.
Yeah, so a little bit of information from each of the task forces about what's going on.
Yeah. Alrighty.
This is a reference. The last one we held in 2019 was from two to four in the afternoon at Lafayette Renda Presbyterian Church.
Oh, I thought it was later. Yeah, I I think that some people who attended before didn't think that time was so great.
If you look, if you looked that up, Mark, can you tell whether that was on a weekend? Because it it just doesn't make sense to me that we would have scheduled it that that time of day if it wasn't a week.
It's a Sunday.
Yeah, okay, so.
Sunday.
Alright, so we decided to have it on a Sunday afternoon last two years ago, but I think we're thinking about a weekday evening this year.
Yeah, if we move it around, it gives different people a different chance to participate too, so. Okay, well, thanks, everybody. Thanks, Doug.
Can I, Doug, can I ask a question? If you guys are thinking all the way till the end of August already, is there thought or talk about doing a Thanksgiving uh service again this year?
Um, well, I would assume that we would, but we haven't discussed it yet.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't see any reason we wouldn't since we held a virtual last year. So hopefully, I don't see any reason why we can't hold it inside.
We'll see.
Cross your fingers. Okay. Um, let's see here. Elizabeth, uh, I'll come back. Judy Stillman, I thought she'd be here. I finally got a note from her. She said, you know, I haven't been getting my emails from you guys. What? So uh she's back on and she's getting them, but she didn't come today. So they are, I didn't write up a report for her, but they are um doing well. They had, well, they've been like one or more hosts, uh, looking to go back to the traditional um two two uh weeks at a at a church, uh, that's a host with all the co-hosts and so forth. Uh, they are, they have, they are getting some people into housing from the parking lot program. Uh, that's, they get like a steady eight uh coming in there. And so um, you know, financially stable and the it's been a tough year, but they've they've made it. You know, they've gone through some staff and a lot of changes, uh, but they've been able to make it work, so. Yeah, if she pops on later and wants to say something, we'll let her do that. Alrighty, Ronnie.
And if I could just add something, we've been thrilled to be supporting them because right now they're at St. Paul's Episcopal Church right next to Trinity Center. So um they've been using our laundry and shower facilities. So so it's it's been nice to be able to have that um partnership as well. It's it. We don't actually interact with them because they do it at night and weekends, but it's nice to know this resource is being used to support winter nights as well.
Absolutely. That's good to hear. I didn't know that. Okay, Ronnie.
Hello, everyone. Um, so let's go on with EPO. Uh, we just had our IFtar Under the Stars event at um a curbside community in RV Park over near the Oakland um Coliseum. So there were about 15 people that showed up and we had food, we had rit- ritual. Um, and we had a lot of things do- donated by um the food pantry and we also um purchased su- supplies like hy- hygiene pro- products for folks. Um, it was the kickoff event for our, well, not kick it kick kickoff, but it was the first event um for our Affordable Housing Month um that EPO is doing. Um. And. And we're having more events to come. Um, we actually have an event tonight. Um, it's Alice Street Film Screening and a Community Ben- Benefits Agreement Discussion. Um, which is going to be at six o'clock tonight. Um, I can put a link in the chat if you wanted to RSVP.
Please do.
Yeah. Um, but our actual like kickoff is in the middle of our events. It's um gonna be May 13th on a Thursday at five thirty PM. And there'll be a special performance by Kev Choice. So we all show up for that. Um, but let me find the link so I can share it with you all.
Well, under under, on the agenda, I hope you all saw that I have a link.
You have a link?
Uh, not for that, but for an event that's already happened uh with affordable housing with y'all that you uh it it just says recording of the of the webinar here, but it was with um uh addressing our climate change through housing advocacy. It was awesome. It really was. Well done. Tying the two together and and how how they work well together. Um, and really good speakers, so.
Thanks for sharing that, Jan, and and thanks also for um attending. I know you attended and I think Doug was there as well. Um, the event last Wednesday um about pathways to housing justice in Contra Costa County. Um, that included um Levana.
Martin.
Yeah, Levana Martin and Kristy Loughlin and um Nicole and, yeah.
Nicole's a part of, yeah, I just tried. I'm looking at it going, who was on that? Thank you, Sophia. They were.
And Woody and Woody Karp, uh, recently retired from Eden Housing. Um, so that's uh, you can access um the recording of that um on our website, I believe, if you're interested, but um we spent some time talking about um barriers to uh to housing organizing and housing justice in Contra Costa as well as as well as opportunities. Um, so.
Doug?
Happy to do that.
Yeah, I would just wanted to point out a couple of other uh events in the EPO um Affordable Housing Month lineup. First of all, thank you for doing that one on um housing justice in Contra Costa. That was good. But I wanted everybody to know that if it if you go to that link that Ronnie put in the chat on events, um, I wanted to point out uh two events coming up on um the next two Fridays. Um, one of them, this Friday, uh at one o'clock is, the title is In Alignment, A Conversation About Housing Provision, Policing, and Racial Justice. And um on the 21st at noon is uh an event titled Reimagining Community Safety and the Role of Transformative Housing Solutions. Though I think those are both um uh they both have the potential to be really interesting policy discussions.
Yeah, I appreciate the broadening and the overlap, uh, getting people out of silos. And.
And the um EPO's Faith and Ju- Justice Committee um is kind of sponsoring the one on May 20th, 2020th, which is called Creating Sanctuary, How to Le- Leverage Faith Community Land for Affordable Homes. So it's going to be a panel discussion about um wi- with folks that have have a affordable housing on their church property and what it took to get them to that point.
Good.
So it's kind of like an encouraging pa- panel to encourage more people to have a affordable housing on their land. So we can hear from experts.
Yes. Because uh we need more affordable housing everywhere.
Yes.
I was listening to the uh uh to the appropriations in the Senate today on a couple of housing issues and listening to pro and con and I'm like, really, people? It's like people in Beverly Hills and even Lafayette, you know, that it's just they, on the one hand, they talk about, well, we need more funding for affordable housing and we need it to be built in the com- you know, in the downtown commercial section. But then when they try and do that, they they don't like that either.
Yeah.
Come on. And welcome, Christoph. Nice to see you. Uh, Hope Solutions.
Everybody, oh, I was gonna, can I share my screen? Or would it be? I don't need to.
First off, let's just.
Just a second.
No worries. Uh, well, as I'm waiting.
Alright, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I was just gonna say I'm looking forward to the rest of Affordable Housing Month. I know that our Resident Empowerment Program leaders are gonna be there and William is speaking on the event on the 19th. So, um, okay, uh, sorry, here we go. I just wanted to do this because I think it's helpful visual. This will come in your minutes as well, but uh you don't have a ton of updates, but um we're very excited that our spring newsletter is out. So if you're on our mailing list, you should have gotten that this last week and just really excited. It's all about inner uh ending intergenerational homelessness. Um, and so you'll it's also on our website and the link is in this uh in the report you'll get as well. Uh, we also have added a really cool new feature to our website. We've highlighted a bunch of our um, which we've not elevated as in the past. We've done a better job of elevating our news and our video stories and we've, if you attended Ruby Slippers or didn't attend, you can look at the whole thing or just little sections of it, depending on what you're interested in. So go check that out. Um, it's a fun way to um experience that in a new way. Um, and uh as you probably saw in the in the newsletter, uh, our Ruby Slippers Save the Date is already out and we're looking forward to being in person. Um, but on March 5th, 2022, and also going to be incorporating some virtual elements. Got a really amazing response from pieces of that that we're gonna keep. So I imagine that that hybrid space is gonna be something that we share uh organization across organizations in the region. So just happy to to share best practices as they come up. Um, I'm excited that Sandibel Arnold, our our fearless volunteer and coordinate uh or volunteer and donations coordinator is on the call today. Um, and I was just gonna invite her to highlight our our volunteer opportunities since she's here. Um, and those are my my big highlights, but I'm gonna toss it over to Sandibel if she's still on.
Yeah, I had already sent it out, the uh the link.
Oh, awesome.
So I will send it out, yeah, after the meeting.
Fantastic. Sandibel, did you want to highlight anything in particular with with regard to our main needs?
Uh, so for, we're we're planning our summer camps for this summer and we are doing a hybrid of virtual and hopefully in person. Um, we still have our link open to our um Survey Monkey. So if you know of anyone that's interested um in volunteering this summer, uh either hosting or assisting a summer camp, that would be great. And we also have our upcoming backpack drive and that link will also be available um more towards the end of the month, but good to keep on your radar.
Is that, is this a backpack that'll be similar to what you did last year?
Yes, it's gonna be a fundraiser with uh we're partnering with Sydney Page again and it's gonna be very, very similar to last year.
Okay. And congratulations. So we haven't seen you since you had your baby, so.
Oh, thank you.
To have you back. Any questions for Sandibel or Carrie? Well, hi, Dolores. Well, hi, Dolores. Why can't somebody share us the screen? Somebody sneaks in. Okay, Hector. I saw him. Is he still here? There he is. Your turn to send us out.
Hey, folks. Good to see everyone and happy Mexican Mother's Day and also happy belated Mother's Day. I, I guess, I don't know if this was already spoken about, but tomorrow, there's gonna be the second part of the budget hearing from the board supervisors. And there's a lot of asks, but more specifically highlights to how, how much money was, went, went to directly to the sheriff's budget from CARES Act money and just really what they're asking for now in this new budget. And we made this really easy to read infographic that I'm actually gonna post in the link if folks wanna take a look. Just sort of go through it and sort of just see it, digest it. We wanna share this out with the community. The, the more important part of this whole document really is highlighting what we would want to see coming out of the, the budget priorities coming from the Board of Supervisors. One of the biggest asks is the legal services for eviction defense for Contra Costa residents. You know, as we know, right now, there's eleven thousand, two hundred people behind on their rent with the average being five thousand, two hundred and thirty-three. But we've heard of folks who are well over six thousand or even up to fifteen thousand behind on rent. So it's, it's, and the protections that are keeping these folks housed right now, even though they owe so much back rent, will be up at the end of June. So any back due rent that they accrue after June thirtieth is going to be a problem and can lead to, you know, eviction and just people on the streets being displaced. So this ask is very tied to what we're at, what this group, I think, is about. It has precedent. In November, it was passed. I think there was a million dollars to fund legal defense services for four to five attorneys for the entire county. And we're asking, we're basically, if we could get, like, the ideal situation, we've asked for another million dollars coming from the board supervisors to get four or five more. Because four or five for the entire county is simply not enough. Anti eviction turns is not enough. So if we could have ten, it's a start and have them being robustly funded is also a great way to just, you know, keep people housed, because a lot of folks, when they go up to eviction court, ninety percent of them, I think that's the last figure I remember hearing, are not represented. And that's a big problem. So I don't know if folks have any questions on that. And so I have to turn my screen off one second.
Okay.
I have a question not directly related to that, Hector. I was just curious if you or anyone else on this call has heard anecdotally if the state assistance, rental assistance is starting to show up with landlords and tenants. I know it was a slow start to it, but I was just curious if it's starting to flow now.
Yeah, so the latest figures I have are seventy-five percent of the people behind on rent still have not received any assistance. So it is, it is a slow rollout and I think it's something a lot of folks knew was gonna happen just because it's, I don't know, folks have tried going through the website for housing is key is, it's very cumbersome and I can see why some folks may who may not have, you know, access to technology might know how to use it or even language barriers. And there is a lot of, I feel like, case management that's kind of required, especially for folks who, you know, have other things going on, like the eight different spinning plates, like kids, finding the right documents, making sure to follow up these different timelines, et cetera. So it, it makes sense. And this program launched in March. So the fact that only twenty-five percent of people who are behind on rent have received any funds is really problematic, especially because we only have one month left before these protections go away. So I don't think in one month, we're gonna be able to get to, you know, one hundred percent of people having received those funding.
Hector, is there anything in the works to try and help the people who have submitted an application but not received anything to have an extension? You know, if they participate in the process and their landlord's participating, but, you know, there's a blockage in terms of the money flowing. Is there any timeline to extend to help them? It's not their fault. They've done what was asked so that they won't be evicted while the, while the process is being done by the state.
Well, that, that's a really good question. I'm sure maybe, maybe other folks might have other opinions on here that I also welcome, but we're, so the way that ERAP was, or the Emergency Rental Assistance Funding was moved into Contra Costa was essentially that the county would have control over, the state would have control over the funding and then the counties would select different CBOs or nonprofits, whatever, to distribute this funding. And EO actually is working to hire a sort of a, a convener of sorts that can help bring those agencies together and talk to each other as sort of a project management, a product manager to ensure that those organizations are speaking to each other and are able to, you know, move things along. But that's still in the works. Unfortunately, I don't have a more cogent answer in terms of what timelines. I think it's all been kind of messy, I guess, from my end, even just getting the money out. So it's very important for us to, at least, I'm hoping that in the state level, we get an extension to the moratorium. I've heard different things, some that are a little bleak in terms of actually expending it to at least September. But the Raise the Roof Coalition, I spoke with Kristy Loughlin, and we might be interested in introducing a resolution that, you know, puts the pressure on the board of supervisors to at least tell the state, hey, we want an extension. And including in that resolution, things that, you know, we wanna see coming from the state. And if the state doesn't approve an extension, the, I feel like the next strategy would be to then say, hey, you know that resolution you guys said you guys were all about? How about we bring it to Contra Costa? Because after June thirtieth, right now, there's a provision in the protections that does not allow local governments to create their own lack of payment of rent eviction protections, but after June thirtieth, Contra Costa will be able to. So we're kind of, it's unfortunately, that's kind of, it's, it's, it's a mess.
Yeah, not surprising. I think it's like everything else, trying to go through a funnel. I saw that where did Julie go? There you are. You want?
I was late to join. Indeed, the Board of Supervisors put the CDBG funding on hold while the state ERAP program rolled out. So after the ERAP has kind of run its course, the Board of Supervisors and all the municipalities that participated in that could you know, make the CDBG funding available again. The, the challenge, I think, is that the state's portal, it's true. Contra Costa County said, let's just do it through the state. So everything goes to the state portal. And even to get assistance, people have, you know, a state phone number to call and even their calendaring software only opened this past week for people to be able to sign up for help, for an appointment for help. And in Contra Costa County, there's only two tier three nonprofits that are were selected to actually go out and help people. And a tier three means you're providing in-person services. People can come to you. You have open office hours. They can get help scanning their documents and that kind of thing. And that's Monument Impact and Jakara Movement, which I don't know, they're in Fresno, so I have no idea how they could be in Contra Costa. So really, Monument Impact is the only local nonprofit in Contra Costa County that's actually providing in-person services. Tier two people, we can do doorstep, what they're calling doorstep appointments. So we can go out and help people fill out applications, but, but folks haven't been able to sign up for help until this week. So, I mean, the, the users of the calendaring system, in other words, the nonprofits just got trained on it last week. So it's only really live this week for people to be able to sign up for assistance. So
And we know that's gonna end up blocked in full and backed up.
Absolutely. So, and they gave us terrible budgets. So let's, I'll say, I'll just tell you that we put in a budget request to them that was funded at less than twenty percent of what we requested. So you cut the knees right out from underneath of the support when you only give the, the nonprofit a portion of what they asked for to do the work.
Do you plan on speaking at tomorrow's board meeting? I mean, are they aware of this? This is, this is not workable.
Yeah, I mean, I think they've really put people at a disadvantage. And on the FESP meeting last week, I was in a breakout session with a couple of case managers who, who are saying, you know, a lot of landlords are not willing to write off part of their past due rent. And so there are plenty of landlords who won't accept the state's eighty percent offer and keep people in the housing.
Yes.
I, I, I hate to say that, but that's, and it's only, only anecdotally that I'm hearing that, right? I mean, I don't think that there's any data yet to say that, but that's what, certainly what the case manager experiences.
What's the state gonna do with the money that they were given? They gonna lose it? Go back to the feds?
I have no idea.
This happened with the, the, you know, the COVID vaccine. And, and we had enough sense to say, no, we're gonna keep it local. We're not going to Blue Shield, Blue Cross, or whoever they were.
One, one last thing I will say about this last piece, and Julie, I think you hit it right there, where, you know, some landlords are not forgiving the twenty percent or the remainder of the rent debt if they choose to accept any funding, is that right now, we don't really know what's gonna happen in August once landlords are able to start suing their tenants for the money. I, I've heard conversations here and there, but it's still a bit hazy. Unless there's like a state intervention or something like that, it, I mean, we don't know if that's gonna lead into wage garnishes or putting liens on stuff like, so, I mean, because this debt can be significant for some folks, especially if they're low income, which we find that a lot of folks who have, even if it's like a thousand dollar debt for low income families like that is a significant debt. So we don't know. I don't know if there's anyone here who knows more information on, you know, the debt that's coming up in August and when it's gonna be able to basically be sold to third-party people or to be sued for, but it's, it's coming. It's coming.
You've been patient, Doug. Your hands up.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Hector for posting that infographic that he started out with. I have been in some meetings along with Hector and others, working out what goes into that infographic. And the last time I saw it, it still had a lot to be done on it. So I'm glad to see that, that it's been, it's been finished off. And I just want, we've been talking about pushing that out to a distribution of multi-faith action within Multi Faith Action Coalition, but we were waiting for it to be finished. So, and I haven't seen the final version yet, but I do think we are gonna distribute that to at least some distribution. For those of you who already have it, because you have the link that Hector just put in there, if you have an opportunity to tune into the Board of Supervisors meeting, this is a good collection of potential talking points to, to use in any public comment that you wanna give to the supervisors.
Or you can send emails, was usually five o'clock or something today, or if you remember, Doug? For comments before the meeting tomorrow? Yeah, I imagine if you could get it in this afternoon. Let's still get it. Okay, any more questions from anyone? All right. Well, thank you, Hector. I appreciate you're giving us the information we need to, to move forward. Let's see here. Clara, Home Match.
Hi, everybody. So, yeah. Sorry to, well, I guess I'm following up on something quite heavy with hopefully something a little lighter. So basically for CCC, the past three months have been great. We've had three matches from the month, March till it's May now. Our last match was made in Concord and it was an intergenerational match between a twenty-seven-year-old seeker who had found work in the area with a seventy-eight-year-old home provider who was a renter and was having a hard time paying his rent. And it's, it's unclear whether it was related to COVID. I think he was having a difficult time paying his rent for the past few years. So it was nice to be able to match him. Currently, we have three home providers that are active, mostly because we matched half of them with these past few months. We are looking, as always, for more home providers, but we are also receiving a few calls from potential applicants interested in opening their homes. So that's been really great. The Home Match was also part of the East County Senior Coalition and City of Brentwood Senior Health and Safety Circus Drive-Thru Event. We had a hundred and eighty-nine older adults who participated and they received food boxes and various activity kits, health kits and emergency preparedness kits through that, through the event. The next East County Senior Coalition event will be the seventeenth of this month from eleven AM to three PM. And it'll be in partnership with the City of Pittsburgh. And I think it's gonna be a, yeah, it's also gonna be kind of a drive-through event where seniors can come and receive, you know, again, food boxes, preparedness kits, all that kind of stuff.
Can you, when you get done, can you put that in the chat for us?
Definitely. Um, yeah, I will say some patterns that were noticing in terms of home providers and home seekers that are coming, home seekers has home, the number of home seekers who are coming through the program has remained pretty stable through the past few months. There are definitely more home providers who are showing interest, I think, again, as vaccines basically have opened up to everybody. We have a lot of home providers requesting only to be matched with seekers who are vaccinated. And then we also have had a lot of home providers who come to the program who unfortunately didn't qualify because it's after doing an intake with them, it seems like they're more looking for in-home care services. So, yeah, I guess it's just general trend for the program. We've been very happy to, to see matches going up again. So that's been great. Any? Yeah, sure.
Can I ask you on Alameda? I mean, this is your area, but
Yeah.
Alameda, I know that the there are some people at the Church School of Religion that, that will, will probably be looking for some kind of housing and just, just wondering what the maybe, maybe I should go out and look at your requirements on your website.
I'd be happy to touch on it really quickly. Um, so actually, and that also jogged my memory, Jen, thank you. We did hire somebody to, we hired a program coordinator for Home Match Alameda County. So now we are more robustly staffed, so hopefully we'll be handling more of the requests that are coming out there. Right now, we run like two program areas in Alameda County. So one is our Fremont Union City Newark Program in Southern Alameda County that's in partnership with the City of Fremont. And then I'm, we, we've started Home Match Oakland, which is our Oakland program. So that one is a little, the, the lines are a little bit looser. So if you're a home provider, you have to live in Oakland or one of the surrounding cities, like we're, we're taking home providers in San Leandro as well. For home seekers, if you live anywhere in Alameda County, you are allowed to apply to our Home Match Open Program. Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for Clara? No hits? Joan? She's unmuting. Here she goes.
She's unmuting so she can get up her spiel here. I'll just read it. CCEB held a free drive-through food distribution on April 13th, and will hold another one on May 11. Both events are held at the East Bay Richmond Service Center in Richmond. The program committee has chosen the Housing Services Program as a pilot program to evaluate the effectiveness and impact of program activities. So we know the activities are resulting in value to the clients. The current activities are set up to provide emergency services only, as I mentioned, I think, last month. And the goal is to move to a sustainable service program. Also, the housing services will be studied to see how grant-funded activities impact future outcomes and whether those services can move to a non-grant funding source of service of income. I mean, the housing services focus is in Alameda County now, especially with two cities that were just mentioned, Oakland and Fremont, due to the growing and ongoing housing needs there. There's been a loss of staff in Alameda County while the client numbers are rising. Of course, I think currently there are 1.8 million clients that are involved with increased need for funds. CCEB is working with the City of Oakland to a Second CARES Act grant, emergency rental e-reap that we just talked about. It began on April 21st and will go through March 31st. This will provide increased payment of back rent due for COVID-impacted residents who've experienced unemployment for more than 90 days. And.
Is there a timeframe on that 90 days?
Well, this program support will run through from starting with April and run through till next year.
Okay.
I lost the page. What was the date for? I don't know how all these other things pop up when you click on something. All right, it disappeared. I'll put it in the report, obviously.
Yeah, and I'll try and get that out sooner than not.
Yeah. Well, the.
Got the time on the, if you could put in the location in Richmond where this drive-through is and the.
Yes, it's, I, yeah, I put it, it's the East Bay Richmond Service Center in Richmond. What is it? Harbor Bay? Harbor?
I don't know. I'm asking you.
Yeah, you know what I did? I rewrote this thing. And for some reason, my computer really kept.
Okay. I'm just requesting that you add it if it's not there.
Oh, I will. Yes, I will. Thank you.
Okay, great. So, and you, is this happening in an area where other food drives aren't happening? Or, I mean, Richmond's a big town, so. Did you survey, or that's just where the center was, and that's where people needed to know to come? And it's a regular center type of thing?
Well, they had one on April 13th, and the second one will be on May 11th. And they're at the East Bay.
Tomorrow.
Service Center in Richmond on Harbor, Harbor Avenue, I think. And why it's not in this report that I just did later a little while ago, I don't know.
Okay, it's okay.
I will put it in, I'll send it to you after the meeting, Jan.
Okay, great, great. Well, that's great that they're up and rolling, certainly is a need everywhere.
And I'm just a member of the program committee. So I'm not directly involved with the Housing Services Program. So I get that off of their website. Anybody else could check too.
You might put that in the email, that if there's an email address for that website as well.
Okay.
All righty. Legislative updates. All I know for sure is that AB 71, Bring California Home, will be heard in the appropriations next Monday. I listened to a little bit of it today, and it's just like boom, 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 you know, they go through. They've already made presentations to get them voted out of committees and they have the people speak for and against, and the ones that I watched, they put them in suspense. So what do you, what do you, what can you add to that, Doug? About the process?
Well, okay, so there are three active bills that Multi Faith Action Coalition supports at the recommendation of this task force. Jan mentioned one of them, AB 71, which is the very bold $2.4 billion program to really, you know, build sustainable funding to end homelessness. The other two bills, AB 328 is the reentry housing program, you know, using savings from closing state prisons to provide housing for people returning to their communities. And ACA 1, which is the, would be a constitutional amendment to lower the bar for passing Housing and Infrastructure Bond Acts from the current level of requiring a 67% majority of voters, lowering it down to 55%, which is the same as what's currently needed for school bonds. Anyway, those are the three active bills, and they're still active along with, well, AB 328 has already admitted to appropriations also. So both AB 71 and AB 328 have passed through what they call policy committees. And, and they, when they hit appropriations, as long as they pass that first hurdle that Jan's talking about, AB 71 getting next, next week, they just would sit there for a while with that suspense category that she talked about, really means they just put it into a hopper, waiting for a time when they have to go through a lot of bills all quickly to try to figure out which ones can be funded and which ones are just, you know, too far outside of the range of expectation for the budget to support that they wouldn't even put them up for a vote. So that, that, they're going to probably stay in the appropriations for a while before they, before they move to the floor. I would say at least a couple of weeks.
Would they move to the other house where it was not introduced?
No, they have to go, they have to go to the floor of the assembly, well.
Okay.
Yeah, they're both assembly bills. So both of those bills have to go to the floor of the assembly for a floor vote.
Okay.
In order to determine whether they, whether the assembly approves them or not, and only then would it go to the center.
Okay. That's the part I didn't, don't have down yet. Learn a little bit more about the process every year. Okay. Great. Jamie is on vacation, and I have, I sent her a link out with the agenda on the opportunity for, she had something going today, also at 1:00 to 3:00, the continuum of care. And I have a comment or two in the homeless report from her habitat. What do I have for habitat? I did find out, or asked this week at our task force about Esperanza, the Habitat at Pleasant Hill Bark. And they had been slowed up last month by a tribal council consultation. That's got a green light. They are interviewing residents for people to live in the new building. And so things should be picking up with the construction and all here soon. Let's see, Carol wrote down, home first in San Jose is up and running. It's the only affiliate in the US building small transitional houses. That's in San Jose. The home repair program's currently working on renovation on condos in two homes in downtown Oakland, built on Kaiser property. And they're working on a 14-unit condo project in San Jose. And my contact there has completed her doctorate program. She could never come on Monday because it conflicted with her work, but she always stayed in touch. And so she's going to be moving somewhere, and for a while, it's going to be a little difficult because people are going to be doing their jobs and, and filling in for what she was doing. So, but she has done a great job of being in contact and sending out all kinds of great visuals and whatnot. So I wish her well wherever she's going. And what do we have next? Let's see. Dolores?
Not much going on with the naval weapons station, although the City of Concord has put out a call for qualifications of any company that's interested in applying to be the master developer. And the qualifications, they can turn in their qualifications until June 18th is the last day. And then the city will look over that and then decide which ones they want to interview further. That's it.
Questions for Dolores? Or whenever she meets with.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We'll think of something at any time.
You know.
Add it to whenever she gets a chance to ask it.
Dolores, did they even receive any applications yet?
I don't know.
Okay.
They just put, they put out the thing April 16th. So at first, they had about 15. But, and then when they put out the call for applications, I don't know whether some of those dropped out or what.
This is the RFPs or?
What?
These are the RFPs, an application to be considered for the project.
Or the master developer.
Right, right.
So they have until June 18th to send in their qualification.
Okay. Well, you'll know something next month.
Hopefully.
All right. If, if you don't hear something before our next meeting, you can call your friend Karen at the city council.
They still hope to have a master developer pick by late August, so.
Yeah. Keep an eye on them, that's all I can say. Okay. A, I mean, Wednesday, it seems to be, last Wednesday with Walnut Creek Homeless Task Force had a lot of stuff here. The LISC group that presented to us presented there. And Donna Colombo has taken over back in the co-chair spot here for the task force. And she found somebody to help her, Mark Newsom. So we had Jenny moved to San Diego, and the other gal is still doing the education. But they, they were there in that spot two or three years, and it's time to move on. But we know we're good hands with Donna. Let's see. Report on Weekend, oh, the Weekend Evening Services was moved to next month because the person that was going to present wasn't able to be there. We had a report from our trash pickup team. And Margot, our housing director, says the city is looking at increasing the new budget that will be approved July 15th to provide for the two core members. And I think it'll just be this year's budget. They're still hoping to find another co-partner after Concord pulled our partnership that is doing to, paying for two core members all by themselves. Of course, they're a bigger city and have more money. A new schedule will be coordinated with the county, the public works of police and the recreation. So when we get those two core people, they've got to be aligned with the other core people in the county and other folks. So they'll make that happen. Nancy Williams suggested 211 logs for calls be checked for weekends to get a sense of needs and when the most calls were coming in for what kind of service. So as we know, Trinity operates during the week, during the day. And there is need, of course, for more on the weekends and in the evening. And so I thought this was a great suggestion to see if we could narrow down what, that we're going to ask for a Saturday or Sunday when we, you know, go out there to say, well, we're going to pay for two this year and hope that we could get one of those, which would, which would help spread things out a little bit since Trinity's open during the week. Walnut Creek's in the process of beginning their new housing element that's required by the state every, about every eight years. And an RFP's been released to get a higher consultant to help them with that process. 699 Ignacio Valley, the old gas station there on Civic and Ignacio is beginning to move forward. There was a streamlining process introduced by Bill SB 35 that was passed. And so they've already begun that process, and there'll be 36 to 38 low-income houses or units. There's a lady, Marty, with the Police Department who is representing the City of Walnut Creek on the mental health response changes that we need in the county. And she, she shared that 75% of the psych emergency calls don't meet the 5150 requirements. And yet they've had to use that, families have had to use that because they have to either be a danger to themselves, somebody else, or just to get a requirement to help. So they end up being criminalized in order to get medical help. And so that's the thing we're all working to get changed. And Jamie from H3 said the county will be reopening the shelter, shelters close to the end of June. The Concord Shelter is, has, has been reconfigured. And it's going to have like some kind of cubicles, and they're going to be, allow them, be able to service couples where before it was always just singles, which is a positive thing. And, but it will have a little less capacity, and it didn't have tremendous capacity before. That's, they are making some improvements. And looks like I didn't finish typing this other, but the one in Richmond, Brookline, Brook something or other, somebody help me. That's in a big remodel, and they don't even have a date when that might reopen. So as Leslie or somebody else said, any more housing shelters and all of that good stuff? Any questions? I wanted to ask Elizabeth if she wanted to share any of her church's story about the companion person, yeah, someone at your church who was companioning an immigrant, I believe, in a housing situation.
So we have been accompanying a family that's undocumented for some years, and they have two small children. Both parents have some health issues, but the mother especially does because she has really severe carpal tunnel issues. So that's impacting their, her vocational options. They had been renting from the man's employer, who is now dying of cancer. And he's continuing to employ them, but he said, I need you out of the house. So that was causing a crisis. And I think Sophia and Jan, for helping me, they had been in touch with Monument Impact. They did find somebody who would rent to them.
Oh, boy.
The rent's relatively high because they have two kids, and they wanted a house, not an apartment, which. So the accompaniment team, which includes people from various congregations, had initially said, we, we will do a GoFundMe for you. But my feeling, having worked with unhoused families before, is that you don't need to risk last-minute fund, funding projects when you have especially young children. So we, as a congregation, decided to give them a significant portion of their, they were able to pay the security deposit themselves. But then, as with people who don't have that much income, they couldn't pay first month's rent. They couldn't pay two months' rent in one month. So they did get it together, and they moved in, and there was an additional GoFundMe that got them over the top. So they are, you know, I think. You know, I think maintaining that level of rent is going to be a challenge, but it's good for the moment. And we'll, we'll keep eyes on them.
So was, I guess, looking for other work?
So far, he is continuing to work for the same employer. And I'm not sure if that company will continue on even after the owner dies, so employment is not. His most pressing need right now, but the, the mother. Is going to need surgery on her hands and so they will have continuing challenges. She was, she was making tamales. You really can't do that right now. So, so they'll, they'll remain precarious.
Still in Concord? They found a place in Concord or they have to go to East County?
I think it's in that monument corridor.
Okay, okay.
But they found a fair, it sounds like a landlord who is pretty sympathetic and not too much worried about their documentation.
Wow, that's nice.
Yeah, yeah, they had to be honest with her. And our, our housing, you know, the proposed housing project on the property of the church is. Now in a permitting stage and we expect pushback from our Arinda neighbors. We got something through before, you know, thirty years ago with our other apartment building, so. Really what we're trying to do right now is to be the most scrupulously wonderful neighbors to all the people that live around us. And that's involved a fair amount of, you know, like brush mitigation and trimming trees and stuff like that, which is going to benefit everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
So as that goes forward, I'll let you all know.
And the. Yeah, if you can give us, if they can be scheduled out a couple of weeks so that we can get the word out to people we know live in. Riverinda in particular.
Yeah. We expect it to be a process.
Yes, of course. Well, I would appreciate. I expect to be hearing more of these stories, I've heard at least three since we last met and so. As people are impacted and I'm glad to hear some success with this one. We know that there was another gentleman and his family that I don't, last I heard, you know, they had to move out last Friday or something. Because he took it off the market and at the, one of the meetings, I think that was, I got here at the bottom. Or, or no, maybe it was the one that I went to with the Monument Impact and Christie and. Razor Roof or whatever. The guy who's been active in. In the immigrant community said, boy, he's not hearing. It's like people are, even if they have something they want to rent, a lot of them are sitting on it right now and they're not as much open to buy a rent. Because they're probably waiting so they can jack the bicep, I don't know. But let's, let's keep all these folks in, in our prayers and.
Yeah.
And. It's good to have stories to remind us that these are, these are people, not just numbers. At the bottom, I put another great resource that I stumbled on and I think some, some of the folks, Joan, you might have been on this one. It was a, actually sponsored by Green Belt Alliance, which is, they're normally all about smart. Development, but. Those that was in Housing along at Creek have worked with them for a long time because it, it, there is this overlap that we talked about earlier and so under the. Nonprofit housing person who spoke was Pedro Galvez, who we work with regularly with the Northern California nonprofit housing. And. You know, in the, in the Yumby guy. All of them, all of them are just saying, we've got to come out of our silos and, you know, get stronger.
Again, I think you have the same link twice on the agenda, right? You, you didn't need to.
No, I think they're two different ones. Did you check them? Did I give?
Same one.
Twice?
Yeah.
Shame on me, I will, wow.
All right.
Thank you for bringing that up because I really wanted y'all to have a chance to look at them. I will correct that. All right, any other? Let's see, where is our Kristoff? Oh, he's now picking up his phone. Well, okay, thank you for providing this platform, Kristoff. You want to share anything before we go? How's everything at your, your congregation? How are you? Kristoff, I'm talking to you. I'm looking at him. He's not going for.
Sorry, I just had a call come in and.
I thought you got off, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did, because it was. Not what I expected it. Well, we're working on, you know, looking at possibilities to appeal to everybody, that we currently have one mass inside the church. We continue our Zoom liturgy, which is very popular and so looking at maybe doing one mass outside so that. Regardless of how you feel, you can be, you have an option. One thing too is I don't know if anybody has any connections in the San Ramon or Pleasanton area. I have a friend who lives down there and she's renting a room and she's been asked to move out of her room by the end of June. And she would love to stay in that area because that's her. That's where her tribe lives, but she has very limited income. And she's probably late sixties and so she needs a place to live in, if anybody has any connections down in the Pleasanton, San Ramon area. Somebody who has an extra room in a house or an apartment. Should be happy to help with, you know, pet sitting or any, anything around the house to. Make up for some of the rent.
Claire, do you do anything in that area of the county or, I mean, Pleasanton's in Alameda and. Do you get people who, should she submit an application, I guess, as well?
Yeah, she, she definitely can. If she lives in Pleasanton, she can submit an application to our home match Alameda program. And Kristoff, I can connect with you to, you know, get her number and contact information.
She said she was told that they don't have anything, they only have Fremont and Oakland.
Okay, let me.
And so, and those are not areas that she, you know. To move to, so she, if she can stay in the, you know, the Tri-Valley area, you know, Pleasanton, Dublin, San Ramon.
Well, San Ramon's a Contra Costa, but she'd have to live in Contra Costa.
Right, that's why she came, she can't because she currently living in, in, but that's what she was told when she contacted you guys, that she said they don't have anything in Pleasanton.
We, yeah, I mean, that is true that we don't have home providers in Pleasanton and if that's only where she's looking. Then it would be difficult for us to match her there, but I can still talk to her about signing up for the program just to see. And I could talk with my supervisors to see if maybe we can make her part of CCC somehow and maybe get her into a San Ramon home, but yeah, I can, I can.
Yeah, if that's possible, see, she, that's what she was told because she lives not, doesn't live in Contra Costa, she wouldn't qualify for San Ramon, you know, and so. If there, if you can do, you know, figure out if that's, if there's a way to do that and if there's something in San Ramon. She's open to that, but she, you know, she really would rather stay in that area because that's, you know, that's her tribe, everything, everybody.
Understandable, yeah.
I get it.
Anyway, just in case you have somebody, know somebody or whatever. You know, please let me know.
Okay, will do. Well, and Lily, did you, did you get to say everything you wanted to say? You're good?
Unmuting helps. I will send a slide that we got from the California Emergency Rental Relief Program, the Rent Relief, the COVID nineteen Rent Relief Program. That shows as of May first that Contra Costa applicants have only received eight hundred fifty-seven thousand of the state's emergency funding. There's another four million that's been approved, but our, our, it's just, there's over thirty-three million that's been requested. And things are just moving really slowly, so. I'll send this slide, I can send you the California snapshot slide as well as the Contra Costa County snapshot. When I send. After this meeting is over. The second thing is that we are also going to be reopening our volunteer activities at Mountain View Family House.
Oh, okay.
The folks will be able to come back in and start doing meals, evening meals there. And probably smaller groups because the kitchen's pretty small. And they will, of course, have to still wear masks while they're in the kitchen and. Practice all the good protocols. But since we entered into the orange level, orange tier, we're going to reopen some volunteer activities for Mountain View.
Have you had people in the program, they're just a smaller number or no?
Yeah, we've had, we haven't had any volunteers come in.
No, but you've had residents or?
Yeah, we have residents, we moved, three families were moved out in the month of April and we've already replaced them, so finally we got some movement, but. It took a much longer time to get people moving into housing because no housing is turning over.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Um.
That's good to know.
Yeah, and I think that they, they just said you could have two families, I think that's what H three said. You could have two families in a room if they're all vaccinated.
Oh, okay.
We usually only have one family in a room except for in our great room. So if they were vaccinated, we could start bringing in more single moms when, with a kid, with a small child in particular. If they're all vaccinated.
Yeah, we got to get the pipeline moving.
You do, sure do.
Hey, stay well, Happy belated Mother's Day to. From yesterday to anyone. Mark, did you have anything? I don't want to miss you, anybody else who hadn't spoken? Okay. Thanks so much for coming.
Joan, I will send you the recording, okay?
Oh, Joan, I have a write-up for the Homeless Task Force, I forgot to tell you.
Oh, good, thank you. Thanks, Kristoff.
You're welcome. Take care.
Bye.
Bye, Ronnie.
Bye.